Let's uh. I guess we're ready. So hi, everyone. I'm Tim Wheeler. I'm the LPEA Board Vice President. And I thank you all for attending LPA's 2021 Power Supply Town Hall this evening. I want to acknowledge the other board members on the panel. So if they could just raise their hands and let us know which ones they are. And the members can identify you. And the same for our wonderful staff attendees who will be making the presentation, right? Please raise your hand. Let us know. Thank you very much. As some of you know, LPA has been exploring our options regarding future power supply for more than two years, with an eye towards sourcing affordable, reliable, increased local generation and low carbon electricity to power our communities. We held a series of virtual town hall meetings on this very topic around the same time last year and are now excited to share some recent developments on this front. This evening, Dan Harms, LPA's VP of Grid Solutions, will give a presentation on this topic. We're also pleased to have with us Pat Bridges, the Senior Vice President and Chief Financial Officer from Tri-State, who will be presenting a slide from the Tri-State perspective. Pat, maybe you could raise your hand and identify?
Thank you.
At the conclusion of the presentation, we will open the floor to questions. Please feel free to type in your questions at any time in the Q and A box at the bottom of your Zoom interface. We will then answer those questions live during the Q and A section, time permitting. To wrap up this evening, in celebration of National Cooperative Month, which is October, we will select two names from the participant list this evening to receive a $50 gift card to a local business. So stay online for your chance to win. And without further ado, I will hand this over to Dan Harms to start the presentation.
Thank you, Tim. Let me get my screen share going here. If we can get this going right. Looking good, Drew?
Yep, you got it.
Right. I got it. Well, welcome, everybody. As Tim mentioned, really excited you're here and we're excited to share some of this information with you. It's been probably a year since we did our last town hall meetings and a lot has developed since there, since that time. We keep putting more and more pieces to the puzzle together and finding more information to help us along our journey here. So tonight we'll be covering where we are with a, with a lot of these steps. And so without any delay, we'll get into it. And first off, I did want to mention that glad to see everybody that was a, is attending here tonight. A lot of familiar names out there. Looking forward to everybody's questions at the end of this. We'll get to everything that we can. So we'll get through the presentation, have plenty of time for Q and A afterwards here. So our, our objective tonight is really to provide you, our members, this very clear understanding of a partial contract option that we're exploring today and its benefits to you and LaPlata Electric. So here's a brief overlook of our agenda for today. I'll give you a little bit of background information. Quite possibly you haven't been following our endeavors up to this point yet. So I'll try to fill you in on some of the background there. And then we'll talk about the request for proposals that we sent out to power suppliers to fill in this partial contract ability that we recently acquired. And then what that partnership with the proposed partial, with that proposed power supply will look like between LaPlata Electric, the new supplier and Tri-State as a partnership there. Talk hit on to the top five benefits on this, this partnership and how that looks and how these savings accumulate for you, our members, and what that means for you. So then we'll end it with some questions and answers. So first off, the background information. Many of you might be aware that LPA set a goal in 2018 to cut its carbon footprint by 50% from the levels at that time by the year 2030. And that's all while keeping the members' rates lower than 70% of our Colorado peers. Now, what that means is we follow some statistics on where we stand relative to our other Colorado cooperatives. And that's where we are today is sitting at that 70% level. We're less expensive than 70% of the other utilities, everything combined. So we want to keep that. So without raising rates, we want to reduce our carbon footprint. And you might ask, well, why are you spending so much time focusing on your, your purchase power, your power purchases and what you're supplying to the membership? As you can see from this pie chart built off our year-end financials, cost of power is a very large portion of the expenses that LPA has. It's 64% of our expenses in total. That's approximately $68 million a year that we pay towards for our power that we deliver to you. And so if we can, you know, manage that as best we can, that gives you a lot of value in your rates. So as we headed down this road of exploration on what we might be able to do to look at purchase power expense and, and manage that better, the Board of Directors developed a three-pronged strategy that we've been following. And the first prong is that we were looking towards flexibility in our current contract with Tri-State. At, at the time and right now, we're in an all requirements contract with Tri-State. We do have flexibility to build, generate 5% of our own power within that. But we're, our membership was looking for more. We've already maxed out our 5%. So what else could we put in there to, to expand that? And during those discussions, there was a contract committee that was formed at Tri-State with other, its other cooperative members. We were able to install two megawatts of a community solar project. Just realized I was delayed there a little bit. And secured a decrease in, a 4% decrease in wholesale rates. So those are a couple of things that have happened. Then we were able, also able to establish through that committee, establish a partial contract policy within Tri-State. That was one of the options we were exploring to see what what possibility could there be for a member to still stay with Tri-State and also have additional flexibility to, to look at different options there, different flexibility. So a policy was developed through those contract committee meetings whereby co-op members could go and shop for 50% or should say up to 50% of their power supply granted that, or provided that they could acquire a capacity element from an open season allocation that Tri-State was providing. And so we did get that allocation and negotiations are currently underway with a supplier. We'll get into more of those details here shortly. Then the third prong we were looking at was evaluating the possibility of a full exit. And in order to do that, the first thing we need to know to properly evaluate that is how much would it cost for LPA to exit its contract with Tri-State? And so that's what a lot of the discussions that have been going on at FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, is to be able to determine that number so that we can plug that into our financials and see what that looks like for us. So we've been following each one of these paths with equal vigor, but it's really path two that, that we're going to be focusing on tonight because that's where we've made some headway. Not that these other two have stopped, but this is the one that we're actually making some good headway on tonight and we'd like to discuss with you. So a little more details on what that looks like is that in October of 2020, Tri-State approved a partial contract policy whereby the utilities could get supply up to 50% of their capacity. And so if you look at that pie chart, that basically means for LaPlata Electric, we are on average 142 megawatt utility and that's our capacity. And so this policy would allow us to look for 71 from a new supplier while keeping 71 with Tri-State. And creates, gives us the ability to create more diversity in our portfolio and have a little more shape into what that, that new power supply might look like. As opposed to Tri-State who has to supply power for 42 other members, or 42 members, this gives us the latitude to build that portfolio to meet our members' needs. So I'm going to turn it over to Pat Bridges right now from Tri-State and he's going to hit on some of these discussions that we've had and what this means for Tri-State.
Thank you, Dan. And I'm just going to take a small portion of the time here to talk a little bit where Tri-State does fit in here. And Dan talked about some of this. So Tri-State has been the power supplier for LPEA and other co-op for many, many years. And we have done that with a, a contract that's been kind of a one-size-fits-all contract. Where all members are required to buy essentially all their power from Tri-State with exceptions that Dan mentioned. And we have fulfilled that obligation on our part in a very traditional way by primarily coal-based electric generation, some natural gas-based generation, some federal hydro purchases. And in the last decade or so, a, what I'll call initially a cautious move into renewables. That accelerated dramatically with our announcement of a responsible energy plan about two years ago, where we are making significant strides into retiring much of our coal generation much earlier than originally expected. And replacing that with primarily wind and solar generation projects throughout our service territory. So we're seeing a pretty dramatic shift in our resource mix to much more environmentally friendly type generation. So that's one thing. We think it's one thing that, that crop is like LPEA and a number of our other members want us to go in that direction. The other thing that is a big change for Tri-State, which comes out of that, that conversation that Dan talked about, what we spent at the Contract Committee of Tri-State meet and to give members who choose it more flexibility in their contract with Tri-State. Instead of being that, that all requirements, 100% obligation to buy from Tri-State, having the, the optionality, the flexibility to procure some of your power in some other way, whether it be so there's your own yourself or contract with third parties and Tri-State would still be a supplier, but no longer the sole supplier. They give you more flexibility, more autonomy, more local control, and depends on how you structure this, even maybe local generation possibly. But all those are things that have, the Tri-State Board has adopted, the membership of Tri-State has adopted these kinds of things. And that's where we are today is, is moving forward into this partial requirement contract option, which does give LPEA a lot of things you're looking for. And from Tri-State's perspective, I would say it's not necessarily a loss. Yes, we do lose some of this load that we're serving here. As we move forward in time though, one of the benefits we have is, is we no longer have that responsibility to procure generation to meet that load in the future. So as we can close our coal plants, the obligation to add new generation is lessened somewhat because LaPlata is taking a portion of that responsibility on themselves. That's it, Dan. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat, for filling us in from Tri-State's perspective there. So now I'd like to move along to our power supplier request for proposals. So what we've done so far, we've set the stage, we have our partial contract allotment. And what that ended up being for LaPlata Electric was 71 megawatts. Looking for a block of power that was 71 megawatts that's there 24/7. So our next step, of course, was to say, well, what can we, who can provide that to us? And what's the best solution somebody can offer us, best pricing, best all-around fit for LaPlata Electric? So we had started a process called a Request for Proposals or an RFP, where we had a credentialed third-party consulting firm that we hired to help us with the creation of this and the administration of this. That we had, had an unbiased third-party consultant in there doing that for us. And we sent these, this, these requests out to everybody that could participate in the, in the Western markets that had the ability to provide that power supply to us and in our region. And that's a critical part of it too. If somebody has generation up in the Northwest, but can't necessarily get it to Colorado, that doesn't do us much good. We have to be able to get it here as well. So that sort of limits the number of players that could be there, but we sent it out to a total of 30 different participants. In the end, we had nine respondents that came back to us. Some of them joined, joined forces together and had joint proposals. And then that was narrowed down later to three people or three companies, providers for a shortlist that we brought in-house, had in-person conversations with them, discussions on how well they met LaPlata Electric's needs. And we're really looking at what kind of value they could provide, what kind of supply flexibility, environmental attributes, and the reliability and strength of not just the company, but also the power supply that they provide us. All those things are very important criteria for us to evaluate as we were evaluating and looking at these proposals. And then ultimately came down to one finalist that we chose to enter into negotiations with. So what does this now new or proposed power supply partnership look like? Like we mentioned before, we have both Tri-State and half being delivered from this other provider. This can really be that, we feel that win-win situation for Tri-State and us, as Pat was hitting on some of those. But it's going to take coordination. It's, it's not the way it's been done. This is new ground we're treading on. So it's certainly going to take coordination between Tri-State or alternate power provider that, that comes up and both serves LaPlata Electric as an entity. One key thing to realize in this, in this partnership too, though, is LPA will still remain a 100% customer of Tri-State from a transmission perspective. Tri-State has the transmission facilities that serve into our area. And through this partnership, we get access to Tri-State's extensive transmission network here on the Western slope, which really helps us to be able to bring resources that might be outside of our service territory into our service territory there. We also maintain a lot of the key benefits that Tri-State provides to us today, such as some of the rebates that they'll give us. They help us with switching on at substations and some, some line maintenance here as well. That stuff still remains intact. So the question is, who is this person that sits over here serving this, this other 71 megawatts? Well, that company that we've chosen to enter in negotiations with is called Crossover Energy Partners. They by far were the company that, that excelled the most under our evaluation here. And so I'm going to go into some of those, some of those details on why we did choose Crossover Energy Partners. First off, they came to the table with innovative partnerships, providing that customized solution that LaPlata Electric was looking for. That's a real key component. This isn't something that, we aren't just buying output from one solar array. We're looking for this block of power that's a combination of diverse resources. They also scored the best on cost and reliability and also the clean energy that they could deliver, the environmental attributes. Absolute key component is strong financial backing. As we'll discuss here later, the type of service and pricing that they're providing to us is only as good as their financial backing. If they promise us low prices, but when something, you know, happens on the grid and they've promised to deliver it to LaPlata Electric at a certain price, you need to make sure they've got the financial backing to be able to deliver on that promise. They're a well-established company who's developed more than 10 and a half gigawatts, 10,500 megawatts of renewable and traditional generation throughout the, throughout the regions here. This is also another key component. It's new renewable generation construction that's dedicated to LaPlata Electric. This isn't a company that's going out and just making market purchases and putting renewable credits layered on top of that. This is actually new steel-in-the-ground construction that'll be used to serve LaPlata Electric. And it's like I said, diversification is very important. It's not just, it's, it's largely going to be solar and wind, but at times those resources are not online, there's, there's going to be traditional resources that fill in those gaps there as well. And most, one other important thing is that they were willing to seek creative local generation solutions as well. Obviously, when you enter into a purchase power agreement with a provider, they want to sell you power. But we're looking for entities that also wanted to work and have the flexibility for LaPlata Electric to be able to install its own local generation inside of our service territory. So we wanted to make sure that was a possibility within this arrangement as well. And then the last, last reason that they really stood out to us is that their proposal did include substantial commitment to our community. That's something we actually included in our RFP was that we were looking for a partner that wanted to work not just with LaPlata Electric, but with the, our community and our members. We'll get into more of those details here as we go into our top five benefits. So first off, we have cost stability. I sort of mentioned that pricing there and that importance of the financial backing. What this proposal looks like has set pricing for a 20-year period. We evaluated 10, 15, 20, even 30-year agreements, looking for that optimal fit for LaPlata Electric. And each of the proposals provided us lots of options to choose from. We're honing in. It's not set in stone, but we're sort of honing in on the 20-year option here. And this seemed to fit really well with LaPlata Electric. And the, and the key thing here is that this is known pricing for this 20-year period, set on a glide path there that we can look at. And we are not open and susceptible to market fluctuations there. And so that gives us that cost stability, that price certainty that we're looking for from this portion of our power supply. And it's, once again, I'll reiterate, they have the financial backing to weather the storm as well. Second benefit, reliability. We still have the continued use of Tri-State's reliable transmission grid. The same grid that's delivering power to us today will be delivering power to us tomorrow. Through that continued use of Tri-State's grid, they'll also be able to provide us the substation and transmission line maintenance that they've become accustomed to providing us over the past as well. Then we have additional trice, transmission accessibility through crossover partners. That brings the possibility of even having more transmission paths into our area. Then on top of that, you combine that with more regional generation, generation that's closer to us means that we're less dependent upon the transmission grid to get it here. The closer it is, the better off we are. It increases our resiliency, increases our reliability. Third is the environmental benefits. I hit on some of this earlier. But we could be lowering LaPlata Electric's carbon footprint by over 50% the day we start receiving power from crossover. That can exceed our 2030 goal. We could accomplish our 2030 goal six to seven years early doing, doing this. So we're excited to see that in that proposal had 75% of the new power supply would be served by new renewable generation. Once again, focus on that word new. Installations dedicated to LPA. And so that really can help us bring our carbon footprint down. Then you layer that on top with what Pat was saying, Tri-State's been doing with retiring coal plants and putting in more renewables. And then you package these, these two sides together and we really have a great path forward to reduce our carbon footprint. Mentioned that commitment to community. What this proposal included was $1 million in educational grants for inside of our service territory. And the more of the local generation that we can put inside our, our territory, those local, those are local jobs for those local projects. Then we still have Tri-State there that will continue to provide us support through energy rebates. That brings real dollars into our community here. Then LPA, this is another important thing. LPA is still keeping its capital credit balance with Tri-State. There's been a couple of other cooperatives that have done a full exit from Tri-State. And as part of that full exit process, those capital credits are used at that time. So this still maintains our equity, our, our investment in Tri-State. And all this stuff totals up. It's, it's more money in that local economy. So now let's hit on the, the fifth and last benefit. And that's where we're going to get to some of the cost savings here. We're looking at the possibility of being able to save $7 million on average each year. It's $35 million over the first year. And we're looking at 140 million in total over the 20-year, 20-year period here. Now, it's, it's difficult. We can't get into too many of the details on exactly all the cost components into this, yet we still have some hurdles to overcome. One of those is a legal hurdle that we are working through a settlement with Tri-State currently at FERC to really establish the parameters of this partial contract. Once that's established, we'll be able to share some of these buy-down payments is what we're calling it. What costs us to exit with this portion of our load with you, but that is included in these savings. And I want to zoom in here on a, on an annual look at this. And, you know, talk about some of the other things that are included in here. This is using Tri-State's long-term financial forecast to compare to what we feel we can get a package from crossover with and combined with Tri-State, those two combined. And that there's real savings to be had for our members here. As we mentioned, approximately $7 million a year is possible here. And you're seeing a, a good jump that, that hits in, hits after the 20 years. And the reason for that is because we're taking that buy-down payment, that cost that it's going to take to exit Tri-State for this portion of our load. And we're financing that over that 20-year contract period as well. And so once that contract term ends and that financing of that payment is, is over, then the substantial, then just even more substantial savings to be had year after year after that point. This also does include the transmission costs. Some people are familiar with the term wheeling. Instead of paying wheeling, we're actually still just paying Tri-State for the transmission and access to the transmission system as we are today. And so that gives us that transmission ability. And it's the supplier's responsibility to get it to Tri-State's network. So that's included in their price. So this includes all of the transmission costs necessary to get it here, includes the inflation and the other key components that we see coming in, in future energy markets as well. So as we get more and more pieces of the puzzle coming in and we're able to share this information with you, we'll be doing so. So in conclusion, just wanted to highlight some of the, the key takeaways here of reduced power supply cost, increased cost stability, increased reliability and resiliency, less carbon, like commitment to community and that continued partnership with Tri-State. And then we'll end here with, with what these, these savings can mean for you as a LaPlata Electric member. So there are significant savings we're talking about here. Most people are probably accustomed to thinking that, oh, that's going to reduce my rates right away. Well, there's, that, that is a possibility. A rate decrease could be there in the future, but there's other things that could happen from increased savings as well. We could use those, those revenues to keep rates flat well into the future by creating possible reserve funds. We could increase funding for capital projects or fire mitigation projects to improve reliability throughout our service territory. Capital credits is another mechanism. So you can rest assured that if we do make additional margins that were not anticipated, that comes back to you as our members of, of LaPlata Electric. So any money that we make does get returned back to our members. And finally, we'll hit on some of the next steps and decision points here. So as we go forward, one of the next things, as I mentioned, we're looking at that three-pronged strategy. Pretty soon, the board is going to be deciding if that partial supply contract, giving all of this information that we now have at our fingertips and the feedback from our community, is this the path that we want to pursue? Keeping in mind that that does not prevent us from continuing to look at a full exit if that does make sense for us later on. Then, of course, we've got to finalize our partial contracts with both crossover and Tri-State. It's sometimes a lot of details in these contracts, not just on where the power is going to come from, but also how it's going to get here and all sorts of the, the special terms in case there's changes in the markets and the way the power is delivered. All that needs to be considered in these contracts as well. And then to top it all off, we have to make sure that the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission or FERC approves this methodology that's contained within these, within these partial contracts. So those are some of the the next steps that would be ahead of us there. So I think that brings us to our, our Q and A section. Mr. Wheeler, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thanks, Dan. That was, that was a good presentation. Thanks much. And also Pat for your, your contribution as well. So at this point, you'll be happy to know that I will hand the floor over to Hillary Knox, who's the LPA's VP of Member Experience and she'll quarterback the Q and A session and the final door prizes. So Hillary, if you're ready, take it away. Thanks. You're muted, I think. We can't hear you, Hillary. Nope, still not.
I'll tell you what, Tim, while, while Hillary's trying to figure out her audio there, I can see some of these questions too. So I might grab onto the first one here.
Okay.
While she's figuring out the audio there. The first question came from, from Bill Wobin, who asked, where will crossover's new renewable energy projects be constructed and by whom? So first off, where? Those are the kind of the things that we're trying to find out and determine right now. Crossover has a, a list of shovel-ready sites that are part of the proposal that were to us, that was to us. And so we're in the process of evaluating what is going to be the best fit for LaPlata Electric. Looking at a few different options there. So we can't say exactly where those are going to be until we get that PPA finalized. But I can show you, there's lots of, of good options there that have good transmission accessibility. That's certainly something we're looking transmission accessibility. That's certainly something we're looking for. We aren't, you know, there's, there's plenty of places that have vacant land that might be way off in the middle of nowhere, but if it's not next to a transmission line, that can be a very expensive and time-consuming project. And you asked by whom? Crossover does develop projects themselves with the, the, you'll see that their financing branch is KKR. And so they will co-develop projects and they can also enter into agreements with other partners. Thus the term crossover energy partners. They can work with others to provide LaPlata Electric that, that power we're looking for.
Okay, can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
Sorry, I had to drop off and, and drop on. Thank you, Dan. Now unfortunately, what happens when you drop, drop off and drop back on is all of the question queue gets cleared. So Dan, I would just ask you for any questions that are in the queue right now to go ahead and take them. Any new ones like the one that just came in, I can see. But just in, in case you guys don't know, I'll give you a little intro on the, on the Zoom panel. So if you guys look at the bottom of your Zoom interface, there's a Q and A button. If you press that, you can type in your answer. For some reason, you don't feel comfortable doing that. You can also email me at comments@lpa.coop. I'll be checking that inbox and be happy to, to answer your questions. So Dan, if you can cover the rest of the ones in the queue, I'll, I'll pick up the rest.
You're muted now, Dan.
Yep, it got me now too. Gets us all at some point. So some have been added, so I didn't get a good look at what was there. I know Larry's, Lauren Zubris asked, why would LPA enter into a 20-year contract with crossover energy fixing energy costs? When a big complaint with the Tri-State was that LPA was locked into a long-term contract with them? How difficult would it be to buy out of the crossover energy contract if or when conditions change in the energy market? Great question, Larry. That is, that is something that we certainly don't want to have to have a repeat session of. So we want to make sure we have clear exit strategy, exit clauses contained within the PPA that we're, we're looking to create with crossover. And that was actually something that we contained in our RFP was that if anybody could give insight into what a, an exit charge might look like upfront, that would help us out a lot. Some of that was to be determined is the way, some of that came across. So we're working through those. We're going to be working jointly through those parameters right now on exactly what that, what that might look like. So yes, that is definitely something we're paying attention to that. And if anybody else knows that second question that was already here.
I can read it if you like.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind.
So it's from John Purser. We're not allowed, whoops, to see the RFP and we can't see who the nine companies that submitted proposals are. Is that correct? Why can't members see the RFP? Why was the RFP not publicly advertised? So there's three questions.
Right. And, and John, I think we've covered some of these before, but the RFP was not publicly advertised because like I was saying, we were looking for somebody that can meet the criteria that we were looking for, a 71 megawatt block of 24/7 power delivered to the four corners or LaPlata Electric service territory. And so through our consultant, they knew who those participants, market participants could be. And we were insured that we could get that, um, those proposals to the right people at that time. And, you know, I'll need to work with, with Graham. I don't know Graham, if you want to answer, cover why that wasn't or can be publicly available, the RFP part of it.
So, uh, you know, as a business who's, uh, dealing with a large business contract here when we uh, open these proposals to specifically selected embedded companies, we do have initial non-disclosure agreements with this, a highly competitive industry where the price sensitivity is very important. And so in order to encourage as open and frank bidding, uh, applications as we can get, uh, we needed to, uh, ensure confidentiality to, uh, those, uh, bidders.
And Graham, any input on disclosing who the nine companies that submitted proposals are?
Now that was, that was initially, uh, also to be confidential. Um, so it would be something we would need to go back to each of those nine companies and get them to waive that confidentiality in order to be able to announce that.
Well, Hillary, I think that's covered the
Yes, I'm, I'm good. Thank you for doing double or triple duty, Dan. I apologize. You have to have one technical difficulty in each one of these. So I'll take it from here. Thank you. Um, so the, the first one is, um, from Thomas Compton, uh, who points out that crossover has developed storage projects. Um, I understand this is new technology. Will there be any in our area?
Yeah, part of crossover's proposal to us did involve energy storage. Um, as you know, we talked about if we have a lot, if we have a portion of wind and solar, um, energy storage is a great thing to complement that to smooth out the the, the peaks, I'll say of the generation and make it more, better aligned with our load. And so there, there's definitely energy storage that's going to be there. And where exactly that's going to be located, it'll be in that optimal type position, I'll say. So we're still evaluating on exactly where that might be. Um, cost is always a consideration with that and that area is developing rapidly. Um, coming down in price like we used to see solar panels coming down in price uh, several years ago. So looking forward to the, the possibility of energy storage on our system.
Great. Um, the next one is from Werner Hyber. Uh, will crossover's price be fixed for 20 years or will the cost change based on market conditions? Like increased efficiency of wind and solar, for example?
Good question, Werner. Uh, so we had several different options that were proposed to us. And some of those were, it was actually a flat rate, you know, the same price for all the full period of time, 20 years in this instance. Um, other options that started lower with a, with a, an escalator that was associated with it. And, uh, that's the, that's the option that we were looking at pretty closely right now. Not, once again, not that we've, we've chosen exactly which path to go to, but the key thing is that it is fixed. Whichever option we pick, it's going to have a set pricing that is not going to change because of market conditions or because of a polar vortex that rolls through the area, high market pricing, anything like that. That is the, that is the risk of crossover to cover. Um, once again, that's why we're looking for that strong financial backing. So I hope that helped answer your question.
From Michaela Dastil, the infrastructure, solar panels and wind towers hardware is Chinese-made. If global politics cuts the ability to purchase these elements, is there flexibility in the agreement for this type of occurrence?
Yeah, thank you for the question, Michaela. Uh, so actually some of the towers and, and wind generation components are made within the US largely panels are not. Um, so that is, is something that's always going to be looked at and evaluated as the time comes to fruition with, uh, when these projects come online. Crossover and some of their energy partners oftentimes have already accrued some of the hardware and panels that they would need to build such projects. So some of that could be on hand already. That'll be evaluated when the time gets a little closer here, but there's always going to be, um, the option to come up with a plan B. That's always part of what we have going on.
All right. The next one is from, um, Rich, Richard writes, what is crossover's current generation mix and what will they be installing for LPEA?
Okay. Um, what's being proposed? So crossover's generation mix, I don't know if I know that exactly. We can try to get that uh, feedback from crossover um, to put into our Q and A answers when we get, uh, to post them that online. But I can tell you what they proposed to us was, uh, 75% being renewables um, dedicated to LPA. So then when the, the remaining amount of the power is acquired on LPA's behalf, there could obviously be renewables and they likely will be within that mix as the Western grid um, turns more and more green. And so that's likely going to be the mix there would be 75% renewables, 25% market purchases at this point.
And the next one is from Thomas Compton. What's the relationship between KKR and crossover?
Graham, do you want to take that one? I know you've looked at that pretty closely.
Sure. So, um, so crossover is the exclusive energy transition partner of KKR. So KKR works exclusively with crossover in these type of projects and, and crossover works exclusively with KKR when it comes to their financing. As far as like the, the corporate relationship, I believe it's still a partnership. I believe that crossover is a freestanding company that has a contractual relationship with KKR, but I'm not entirely privy to, to that exact relationship.
And, and what I want to also emphasize for people too, is that this is not going to be our last town hall meeting either. Um, when, when we have a little more of the puzzle pieces put together on exactly what's going to be used to serve us, we're going to be inviting crossover to join us on one of these future town hall meetings and they'll be much better able to answer some of these questions about their corporate structure at that point.
Great. Um, the next one is from Rick Berry. Um, so is nuclear in any of the pie slices? Nuclear does not depend on weather like wind and solar do and it can operate 24/7.
There are some definite advancements that have been made in nuclear over the last couple of decades. I can say that that's not in the proposal currently to us. You know, I think a lot of people are, are looking at where that's going to be moving in the, in the coming markets here. It's, it's a very, it's a, it's a good source. The, the newer technologies are, are better and have have, uh, less, I'll say less leftovers in the end. But it's not part of the, the mix at this point.
And the next is from Craig Combs. Does cross, does crossover transfer recs to LPA and then LPA retires them?
Yeah, that's, that's basically essentially what's happening. Those recs will be used by LaPlata Electric to meet our environmental obligations.
The next one is from, uh, John Purser. Is the, is the educational grant of 1 million over five years the only contribution to the local community? How is this to be dis-administered and how are the grants to be awarded?
No, I haven't gotten quite into those details yet. Uh, John, we, I just know that's part of the proposal. Um, we could, you know, look towards our roundup boards or board of directors to help, to help with some of those. So still going to, still have to figure that part out.
Next question is from Christine Johnson. Um, how do you know the estimated savings without knowing the partial buyout cost? Do you have some indications from Tri-State?
Yeah, that's a great question, Christine. We do feel that we have a, know what that buy down, buyout cost is. And it's called, referred to as the buy down payment. In fact, we now have a memorandum of understanding or an MOU signed with Tri-State that um, somewhat codifies those parameters. Um, it's, it's not truly codified until we have the, the wholesale electric service agreement in place and FERC blesses it. Um, but we do have verbal agreement. We know the, the parameters and have a good feel for exactly what that number is going to be. But once again, we're still in active litigation on a settlement and so can't disclose that now. But we feel we know that number and that's why we're able to show those savings.
Very good question. I think, I think multiple people kind of have that as well. So thanks for asking it, Christine.
I probably just missed saying that earlier.
We might want to be more clear on that. Um, so another question from John Purser. Is the local labor content specified by dollar amount or a percentage of any contract worked on in the service area? Will the local contracts be open to public bid?
That's, once again, John, you're asking a lot of the details that we just aren't there quite yet. Um, we've gotten commitment from crossover that they want to employ as much local resources and local talent as possible here. Um, so I would, would assume that we're going to have some, some contract bids that go out there, but I can't say for sure. Maybe depending on who, who the contractor is that, that ultimately has that.
All right. So here's our first rooftop PV question of the night. Um, this is from Les Schaub. How does roof, rooftop PV figure into these plans? And can LPA offer solar PV rebates to customers?
Yeah, rooftop PV is something we, we do today, um, and we can do tomorrow. There's, there's nothing that, that constrains people from putting solar on their roof today, other than, uh, well, there's, there's really no constraints. There is uh, a limit to 150% of your usage, which is a very generous limit relative to what the, the 120 that the state has set right now. So then can LPA offer solar rebates to customers? The LPA used to offer some solar rebates. Now we make, make what are called rec payments. So if a, if a rooftop installer so chooses, they are owner of a rooftop solar array, so chooses, they can sell their recs to LPA that we can use to meet our, our environmental requirements there, but that's not a, not something that has to happen. So there's, there's payment that can happen on that. The key thing is that this cost of solar has decreased so much in the, in the recent years that a lot of the rebates themselves have actually been, been, been reduced to the, to that, to that effect.
All right. Um, another question from Werner. Um, I'm assuming that a partial contract will have to be approved by all co-op members. What is the likelihood of such an approval?
The, the approval of the contract is actually a board responsibility. Our members hire, basically hire by, by voting our board of directors. So that's the members portion of this decision. You're voting for the representative you feel can best represent, um, your opinions when it comes to this.
And so this one's from Michelle Riott and I apologize to you guys if I'm butchering your names. Um, you can call me and correct me later. Um, are there any targets for a future local generation for the 75% new power supply that will be renewable and by when? And is the 75% guaranteed to be renewable through the 20-year contract?
Yeah, great question, Michelle. So we are hoping, and I haven't given any timeframes yet. But we're looking to start this contract for, you know, either sometime between January 1 of 2023 and January 1 of 2024. It does take time to build these facilities. Um, we do feel that we can get things in the ground and ready to go by that 2024 timeframe. We have the option of possibly starting earlier, but it's going to be more market purchases layered with recs. That new generation to service does take time to build. So that 75% does come into effect closer to 2024. And the, the reason why the 20-year contract is because this is actually steel in the ground projects used to serve LaPlata Electric. The longer we can use those assets, the lower it can bring that price down for us. So um, those would definitely be part of our assets for that 20-year period. And yeah, that's, I, I think that sort of covers that question.
Thank you, Dan. Do you need a drink of water?
This is Tim. Um, they won't be our assets. They'll be crossovers assets that we will utilize. Is that correct?
Yes. Yes. Thank you for that, that Tim. Yes, that's exactly right. It's possible some of the, the local generation that we, these, we smaller projects that we put on our own system, those could be LPA, those could be crossover. Whatever gets us the, the best arrangement.
All right. So next up is another question from Werner. Um, by establishing a, a, by establishing a partial buyout cost, wouldn't that also establish the cost of a potential full buyout?
Another good question, Werner. Um, yeah, that we've, we've had some of these discussions too. Pat's been in the middle of those as well. And the difference being that with a partial buyout, we're still a member of Tri-State. It's, it's more of a controlled exit, we'll say. Tri-State could actually, as Pat had mentioned before, this, the 300 megawatts that were included in the open season for a partial buyout is by design. That is capacity that Tri-State will have to replace in the near term. And so if Tri-State can offer 300 megawatts now as opposed to somebody doing a full exit, I guess it's, it's more controlled and fits within the plans of what needs to be retired and what needs to come on. Pat, do you have any other additional color to add to that?
Just a couple of quick comments. Yes, as you mentioned earlier, Dan, uh, with the partial buyout, LPA remains a transmission customer of Tri-State. There's still a relationship as well as the, a supplying a portion of your power. Uh, but part of this supplying a portion of your power. But part of this this MOU agreement is does reflect that if in the future La Plata chose chose to totally buy a Tri-State contract, you'd basically buying out as a smaller customer because you're already this partial buy down would be set aside and only the amount of power that Tri-State is providing in the future would be subject to whatever termination payment we might come up with.
Thank you.
Yeah, you know, Pat was getting hammered with questions on Monday, so we'll try to drum up some more questions for you, Pat, just so you don't get bored, you know. So the next one is is a good one. I I'm really glad, Dave, that you asked this question because I know that this is a question on a lot of our members' minds. So this is from Dave Scholes. His primary home is in Texas and I'm he's sure that we're aware of the difficulties their difficulties in February. I don't believe that any serious people blame that problem on our dependence on wind and solar, but it does appear that our failure to plan for a winter peak occurring during a period when renewables could be limited was the primary cause. How does LPA plan to address this risk?
Yeah, great, great question, Dave. You know, as you're probably aware, Texas is its own grid. It it has more more limited resources to choose from to provide that backup during critical times such as that winter peak rolled through here. So already inherently, where we are located as part of the full Western grid, we already have more resources and diversification at our disposal. Plus, we we do have freeze protection on our natural gas generation. That's that's probably a big one there, too. So all those things better position us to withstand cold temperatures because we're expecting those more so than they probably were in Texas to start with. But both Tri-State and La Plata Electric and the Western Energy Coordinating Council, there's an entity called NERC, which is a reliability entity that overlooks things. All of those are overlooking and have requirements that we need to meet that ensure rely a reliable transmission grid. Now, of course, some of those things exist in Texas as well, and it did occur there. And so that's why it's it's still very important, even with all those regulations, to make sure you've got redundant paths and redundant supplies and that you're not relying on a generation asset that might be served on a radial line. Those are all things that that we take under consideration when when looking at power supply. And the same thing occurs with our distribution system as well. When we run our studies, we run it at peak loads. So we know this is the the peak that's on our system today. And then we we stress that and and other planners do that as well. You really stress the system, say, what is the worst case? Maybe add another twenty percent of that, add thirty percent, forty percent to that. At what point does the system break? Then you know your weakest links and you can plan on replacing those. So that's sort of the planning process there.
All right. So another one, it's not really a question, it's more of a comment, but I think it would be good to to respond and and kind of explain why this our situation might not be the same. So this is from Alan Powdermaker. He said he watched Georgetown, Texas enter into a long term fixed price contracts that required taking energy resources. But when energy prices went south, the ability to lay off some of their excess energy to other communities was not possible. And the cost differential this year exceeded twenty five million dollars more than they could have purchased on market volume and price.
Yeah, another great question. So I think there's going to be a very different structure that we have. Well, there will be a very different structure that we would have versus what happened in Georgetown, Texas there. Whereas Georgetown, Texas actually owned those assets. And so when they had some like surplus generation and reliance, we're going to rely on selling that into the market, they fell short by a lot of money. This isn't the case with us. We are not the owner of the asset crossover would be. And so it's going to be, once again, their responsibility, the risk is on them to be able to size things appropriately, to be able to serve La Plata Electric. And then at times when there's surplus generation does exist, to be able to sell that into the market, and they have to make that decision on, okay, what am I going to get when I sell that into the market? What assumptions are we going to make on that behalf? So that is why we really like the the fixed pricing, the known glide path on pricing here that isolates us from that.
Okay, and the next question is from Graham Downey. Did LPA receive any offers that included new utility scale renewable development within La Plata County? Is crossover only proposing distributed generation projects within La Plata County?
Yes, there were several there were proposals that did include generation within La Plata County. We are a great solar resource here, not so good on the wind side of things. Those two resources complement each other well, so it's good to have a mix of the two. We balanced how much was local and the benefit that that brings in the form of property taxes and hiring of employees and that sort of thing versus what somebody else might propose on on some of the other offers here. So there were were some some utility scale type projects that were proposed, and they still could be very well could be a reality. We're still evaluating what projects are going to be available there. And then is crossover only proposing distributed generation projects within La Plata County? No, there there are options outside of La Plata County, too. And we do serve Archuleta County as well. So I'm being inclusive of that in our in our service territory, that we are looking at the right mix of local projects that fit within our grid. Because our our grid, like as I mentioned earlier, we don't want resources that are hung out on a radial transmission line, that if that transmission line opens up, we don't get the power. And so we want to make sure that our generation assets are located in areas such that are part of the bulk electric network and we can get ready access to it all the time and and balance that with the need that we know we want to have local projects as well. So there's going to be a balance of the two.
All right. Next question is from Thomas Compton. Did crossover have any experience with the big freeze that impacted Texas and others?
That's a good question. I don't have an answer for that one right off the top of my head. And I know crossover is listening. They're probably waving their hand in the air saying they could answer it. But I think we'll defer that one until either the Q and A on the web, Hillary, or our possible future town hall meetings. We'll try to cover that on the on the web.
Yeah, this is a good chance for me to just let you guys know. We're taking the questions from Monday night. We're going to compile them together with the questions from tonight. We're going to get together, make sure that we have good written answers to all of them, and those will be posted on the power supply website on our webpage, which is lpa.coop slash power supply. We will also be posting these presentation slides and also the videos to the recording in case you really just want to watch it again. And we'll have that, you know, available for for you guys as soon as we're able to, probably within a week or two. Also, anyone who registered for these will be receiving an email, a direct email with links to them as well. So that that will be coming your way, too. All right. So the next question is for Pat. So Dan, you can take a breather. So Pat, this one is from John Purser. It appears Tri-State's goal for greenhouse gas emission reductions of eighty percent is more aggressive than LPA's goal of fifty percent reduction. Is that correct? And is the carbon content of Tri-State supplied power to LPA known? And are those and are these metrics supplied to LPA? So kind of a multi-part question.
And I can't address LPA's goal, but I can talk about Tri-State. And just one one comment right up front. It's quite often easy to get kind of confused with percent of renewable in a portfolio and percent carbon reduction from a period of time. And it is true, Tri-State has a it's beyond the goal. It's it's a it's a state requirement that we reduce our greenhouse gas emissions by eighty percent from two thousand five levels by twenty thirty, I believe, is the number. And we are working, you know, to that end. We also, as I said earlier, are actively adding more and more renewables to our portfolio and closing down coal. We're currently provide about one third of our members' power is from our renewable mix with expectation of a twenty twenty four, that number will be about fifty percent renewable. I don't have a number for you for what is the greenhouse gas reduction for that period of time. On the second part of your question about, yes, we do know the carbon content, I can't, I don't know the numbers, I can tell you right now. It is we calculate on an annual basis. I believe those numbers are by the members, but I can't guarantee that. It's not something that I'm that's, you know, intimately involved with. But no, we do go through that process to determine, you know, what is our current mix, what are greenhouse gas emissions and how that has changed over time.
I want to highlight and piggyback a little bit on what Pat Bridges just said there, which was, notice he said eighty percent reduction from two thousand five levels. That's one of the big differences between our goals and and what Tri-State's shooting for, the two thousand five base level, whereas ours is a twenty eighteen base level. That's when we created our goal. That's what we used as a base year. And so Tri-State had already implemented a variety of renewable measures by that point. And so our fifty percent reduction from twenty eighteen just so happens to be very close to their eighty percent reduction based on twenty from two thousand five, when you do all the math and everything there. They're actually very close.
And so we are a little bit over time. We really want to try and wrap things up tonight between around seven ten, seven fifteen. So we're going to just take the the remaining questions in the queue and try and get through these and then we'll wrap up. But I would remind you, if you have questions that don't get answered, comments@lpcoop, we'll be happy to add those to that master Q and A sheet. So let's move to Richard Wright's question. What percentage of crossover's generation capacity will go to LPA?
And that gets a little tricky because we discussed the name being crossover energy partners. Crossover does have assets. I believe what was picked up off their website was ten thousand five hundred megawatts of generation. And if they're supplying seventy one to La Plata Electric, you can, it's seventy one over the ten thousand there. So but if as they bring on other partners, those partners themselves also have a generation portfolio. And so that can expand quite rapidly as we bring more people into the fold.
All right. Another question from Thomas Compton. You anticipate power costs will be stable going forward. Do you have any agreements with Tri-State regarding transmission costs?
So with our wholesale electric service contract with Tri-State, it does not have a fixed cost structure associated with it. Tri-State is a member cooperative, just like La Plata Electric is. And so when they determine their rates, they're taking their expenses, trying to operate as efficiently as possible, taking those expenses, determining those rates to meet financial finance obligations. Let's see. And then do you have any agreements regarding transmission costs? The transmission rate that we'll be paying is actually the Class A rate. So it's not a fixed tariff or anything like that. So if the Class A rate changes, so will our transmission payment. And we are using Tri-State's long-term financial forecast, which is a very robust model behind something that it projects as best as possible what those look like in the in the coming years. Pat, did you have anything to add to that?
Just just one quick thing, maybe two comments, is as we do transition away from the coal-based generation to more and more renewables, transmission is a key component of that. The renewable projects we've done to date, one of the primary determinants of where they're cited is where they fit best in our transmission system, i.e. the least expensive, so the least need for transmission upgrades. As we move forward in time, we kind of we run out of some of those best best locations and have to put things other other places, which then requires transmission investment. So we do see a need in the future to build our our transmission system more than it is today. That would obviously lead you to believe that costs will go up. But at the same time, we're working actively and have for a number of years now, hopefully develop a regional transmission organization here in the West. And if that was successful in doing that, that has the opposite effect. That helps drive down both transmission and generation costs. So we think that is a key component moving forward in the West that will allow lots of opportunities we don't have today. And one of those would be lower costs for all utility providers.
Right. We're in the homestretch. Two more questions. One from Julie Cooley. That's a very cool name. I like that it rhymes. Will LPA buy recs from those of us whose original purchase agreement has expired?
Well, I I think what Julie's asking there is if she maybe has a rooftop solar array whereby La Plata Electric purchased the recs from those. It may have been on a ten year contract and that may have come to an end. I'll have to hook you up with our experts on that, Julie, and we'll we'll get in touch with you on that. One big difference I know is that original contracts back in the day had multipliers associated with them for the recs because the recs were harder to come by and maybe had they had three times multipliers and those days have have come and passed. So we'll reach out to you and let you know what future possibilities exist.
And one last solar question to wrap up the night, Dan. Rooftop solar is currently limited in certain areas because of lines or substation capacity issues. Will some of the savings be used to increase capacity for more rooftop units?
Wow, saved the best for last there, complicated one. So so just to clarify on on some things, there really are not any limitations on people installing solar. There were in the past. And so I would say if you were denied in the past, I would say reapply again, because we have, we're utilizing smart inverter settings that watch the grid constantly and try to balance that renewable generation with the load that exists on our system. And so I would I would definitely say come and come and talk to us again. If anything, we say, yeah, you can put it in, but due to the saturation of solar in that area already, there may be reduced production at times. And it's not a function of how big our wires are. So it's not an investment that can be made on La Plata Electric's behalf. Really, it's a function of how much generation relative to load is out there. We don't have a whole lot of load in the middle of the day when the solar comes on. So there is are some challenges there. So I would say reapply and let's look and see what we can do for you.
Great. You're off the hot seat, Dan. And thank you guys all for your fantastic questions. Again, stay tuned. We'll have all the answers to these written out as well in the coming weeks. And now, before I hand it back to Tim for the wrap up, I will go ahead and select two names from the list of the attendees who stuck with us through this entire session. Again, this is a little thanks to you as our members to celebrate National Cooperative Month, which is in October. And we will be giving fifty dollar gift certificates to local businesses because we love to support them. And if I call your name, I will be in touch with you tomorrow to arrange getting those to you. So I'm happy to announce, without a drum roll, we're not that fancy, that our winners tonight are Ally Shanks and Dave Scholes. Hand it over to you, Tim. Congrats, guys.
Sorry, I had to unmute there. Thanks, Hillary. And I want to thank everyone for coming and for your questions and comments. There's a lot of great, great questions there. For any future questions or comments you may have on this or or any other topics, please email to comments@lpcoop, that's C O O P. As a registrant of this event, you will also receive an email with links to the meeting recording and the slide deck, if you want to watch us all again, or review the slide deck. And I want to thank everyone again. Have a great evening. Look forward to seeing you again in the future.
Thank you.